Mr. President, council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you, and good morning to all. Thank you for being here. Before we begin the council session today, I'll make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, the Inquirer, the Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting, and can also be found on phlcouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call the rules to take attendance, and members that are in attendance just say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please follow the rule.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Brooks.
Present.
Morning.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gattia.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. To all the mothers, Happy Mother's Day this weekend, and also to all the teachers, Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Just sing out love and prayers to all the mothers who have lost their children to senseless gun violence.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, colleagues, mothers who have had to do double duty to be moms and dads, we salute you. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present as well.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neal.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members, also to all the mothers out there, and wishing everyone a happy Mother's Day this Sunday.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. I'm present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning, and good morning to all the awesome moms across the city of Philadelphia. Really appreciate you more than you know. We have a Sabbath sacrament, so we're going to come to order. To give our indication this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor G. Lamar Stewart of Taylor Memorial Baptist Church. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Brooks. I would ask all members and guests, please bow your heads for the indication.
Thank you, Council President. Let us pray. God, we bless you, and we thank you today for your presence and for this opportunity for to come to you in prayer and to seek you ahead of this session and ahead of this meeting for City Council. God, I'm praying today for City Council. I'm praying for the wisdom of council as they think through policy that will impact the people of this city, policy around education and poverty, around safety and economic development, around community development. I pray, God, for wisdom for each council person on this day. God, I thank you, and we're praying, God, for the work of each council member in their respective districts and around the city at large. God, we thank you, God, for their commitment to think through sensible programming during the spring and summer for young people and seniors and vulnerable communities. God, I pray that you continue to give each of them the innovation and the willpower and the courage to do what seems to be impossible even during these very difficult days. And God, on today, we also acknowledge and we thank you for every woman and every individual who is a mother, whether that person is an auntie or a grandmom or someone who biologically birthed a child. I thank you, God, for the opportunity and the gift of mothers on this week. We pray for each mom who unfortunately had to bury a child, or perhaps this Mother's Day is difficult because over the last several years, they had to bear a child. I pray, God, that you would give them peace and joy and your presence even right now. So, God, as this body convenes and gathers, I pray, God, that you would guide their conversation and that you would give them wisdom and strength. We pray these things in the name that's significant to me, the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, and all God's people said, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for the spiritual guidance this morning. We really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
That's right.
Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 28, 2022, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, April 28, 2022, be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 28, 2022 stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye is aye, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Chair, again, thanks, recognizes the Councilwoman for a motion on the sunshine act.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters, resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye is aye, and the motion carries. And our next order of business is communication. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
The mayor, to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Code charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendations of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, bill numbers 2202T2, 220298, and 220323. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1543, 1545, 1547, 1549, 1551, 1553, 1555, 1554, and 1555, South Dover Street, 1540 through 54, South Myrtlewood Street, and 1546, South 30th Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2453 North Carlisle Street, located in the 5th Councilmatic District. And an ordinance amending section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize bicycle lanes on Lindbergh Boulevard between 58th Street and 65th Street, and making associated changes to lanes of travel within the same limits. And an ordinance amending section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on Gray's Ferry Avenue from 34th Street to Washington Avenue, and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. By way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for a next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment. I would like to thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Parker offers four bills and two resolutions. And an ordinance amending chapter 10700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Revues and Littering to further define short dumping and related violations, and to provide penalties and remedies related to such offenses. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Bingham Street and Comley Street. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Clearview Street and North Broad Street. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Lawrence Street and Somerville Avenue, Astor Street and North 2nd Street, Fairhill Street and Tabor Road, Chu Avenue and North Pitt Street, Howard Street and Fisher Avenue, Tabor Road and North 5th Street, Elkin Street and North 7th Street, Somerville Avenue and North 4th Street.
Those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers two resolutions. And title of the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank. These conveying title of various properties located in the 5th Councilmatic District, including on the following streets, Monument Street, North Sidonham Street, and North 31st Street.
Next week's calendar.
And also on behalf of the council president, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank. These conveying title to certain properties located in the 5th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gem offers two resolutions. And title of the resolution authorizing the committees on children and youth and public health and human services to hold hearings concerning the imminent threat to the longstanding constitutional right to an abortion, to examine the profound and devastating local impact that the potential repeal of Roe versus Wade would have on individual lives and society as a whole, and to explore what Philadelphia can do to ensure and increase access to abortion in the face of this threat.
Councilwoman Gem, would you like to be recognized on this resolution?
Thank you very much, Council President. For a right to be meaningful, it must be broad, inclusive, and accessible. For 50 years, Roe v. Wade has stood as the law of the land, recognized as a fundamental constitutional right rooted in the right to privacy, to choose what to do with pregnancy for your reproductive health and for your rights. It is a ruling that helped shape my life. It's a ruling that has shaped the lives of all of us on this body, whether or not we chose to exercise it. Healthcare has been better because of it. Our economy has grown because of it. Every single one of the justices of the Supreme Court, especially Neil Gorsuch, Brett Kavanaugh, and Amy Coney Barrett, during their confirmation hearings, looked the American people in the eye and declared Roe v. Wade settled territory. The law and the Constitution have not changed. Only the justices of this court have. A court that cannot bear or even restrict access to ban military assault weapons can then now fully, effectively, and purposely ban abortions. We should let that sink in. The outcry is not just about Roe v. Wade, but the undeniable reality that ending the right to privacy as fundamental and broad means that a highly selective, undeniably narrow, and deeply political interpretation of the right to privacy on which Roe v. Wade is based now endangers other rights enacted by the court, the right to marry whom you love, whether same sex or interracial, the right to contraception. Today, Governor Greg Abbott of Texas announced that he hopes to resurrect a 1982 SCOTUS ruling about the fundamental right to an education, including for undocumented children. All of us should be outraged and deeply concerned. And for the last eight months, Texas has lived in that post-Roe reality. 1,400 abortions a month are now sought out of state. In total, 13 states have in place trigger bans in the event of Supreme Court action in which abortions would be banned in those 13 states. And a total of 26 states have lost demonstrating an intent to ban legal abortions. So, what I would say is that this work now comes home to us, to local governments, to state-level legislatures. Today, Roe v. Wade remains the law of the land, and this memo, whether leaked or whistle-blown, is an opportunity for the next six weeks for all of us to take this seriously. This week, thousands of people went to the steps of the U.S. Supreme Court, hundreds rallied in front of the federal courthouse here and in front of City Hall. This is something that will resonate for years and decades to come, outlasting many of us in our current council positions. But nonetheless, the urgency is here. I want to thank the women of City Council. I want to thank our colleagues and all of our sponsors for being open to holding hearings on the work that lies ahead, on listening and hearing from our reproductive healthcare advocates, from our abortion providers, from city agencies about what the city of Philadelphia can do to ensure and expand access to abortions in the boundaries of the city of Philadelphia. I look forward to the hearings and for the work to come. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on this week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gem offers a resolution honoring 12 of Philadelphia's trailblazing Asian-American leaders, Lil Yeh, Aisha Khan, Ali Zakhar, and Nanjing Kabita, Por Chu, Pastor Aldo Xianhuan, Anna Perng, Nancy Nugin, Si Mingye, Chef Chris Chao, Hui Chen, and Lee Koyen Wu, for their transformative work in building community, expanding educational opportunity, preserving cultural and the arts, investing in youth leadership, and upholding civil rights on the occasion of Asian-American and Pacific Islander History Month.
Thank you. That will be on next week's calendar. And for the record, see Councilwoman Bass is present. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Bass is there.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and six resolutions. And title of the ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 17th Street and Carpenter Street, South 24th Street and Christian Street, League Street and South 23rd Street, Carpenter Street to South 18th Street, Nardane Street to South 21st Street, Kimball Street to South 24th Street, Webster Street to South 16th Street, and Montrose Street to South 18th Street.
For the committee.
And six resolutions. And title of the resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fee simple title to 3,000 9 Wharton Street, 1554 Dover Street, 6050 and 6052 King Sessing Avenue, 1926 South 60th Street, and 6032 Chester Avenue in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fee simple title to 2628 Titan Street and 2630 Titan Street in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fee simple title to 1,900 through 02 Point Breeze Avenue and 2111 Siegel Street in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1210, 1212, and 1214 South 27th Street, 2723, 2725, 2727, 2729, 2731, 2733, 2735, 2737, and 2739 Ingram Street, 2704, 2706, 2710, 2712, 2716, 2720, 2724, 2726, 2738, and 2740 Manton Street. And 2705 and 2720 Oakford Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1543 South Dover Street, 1545 South Dover Street, 1547, 1549, 1551, 1553, and 1554 and 1555 South Dover Street, 1550 through 54 South Myrtlewood Street, and 1546 South 30th Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank. These conveying title of the certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Thank you. Those resolutions will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers one resolution. And title of the resolution recognizing and congratulating Barbara Silv- Silver for her years of dedicated, vital, and transformative leadership as Executive Director of the Philadelphia Cultural Fund.
And a resolution will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers two resolutions. And title of the resolution honoring the life, work, and accomplishments of Shakita Gaines, whose years of service as president of the Philadelphia Home and School Council has immeasurably shaped parent and family engagement in public schools, set a precedent for how to incorporate social justice values into positions of leadership, and established a clear expectation for how public schools should educate, inspire, and empower students and families in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring the 125th anniversary of the Education, Justice, and Parent and Caregiver Advocacy Organization, the Philadelphia Home and School Council, which continues its long legacy of establishing diverse and representative home and school associations, sponsoring workshops to retain, to train advocates, and empowering marginalized school communities by giving Philadelphians voice and power in the decisions that shape their children's schooling.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gattia offers one resolution. And title of the resolution renaming the 4,000 block of Filbert Street, Elsie Wise Way, to honor the life and legacy of Elsie Wise, civic leader and founder of the West Peloton Steppers and Drum Team.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating Champions of the Week, Newman Goretti High School Girls Basketball Team, on their successful 2021-22 season and winning the 2022 PIAAA Girls Basketball 3A Championship Title.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Squilla offers an ordinance amending title for the Philadelphia Code and title of the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code to amend provisions relating to allowable time extensions on a construction permit.
For the committee.
Councilman O offers three resolutions. And title of the resolution proclaiming May 2022 as the Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia, to pay tribute to the rich history and significant contributions made by generations of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in our country, state, and city.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Settlement Music School on the occasion of its 114th anniversary.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Special Committee on Child Separation in Philadelphia to hold public hearings regarding its final report of findings and recommendations.
That will be on today's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is reports on committee. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the reports. Your, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Labor and Civil Service, to which is referred bill number 220186, entitled an ordinance amending chapter 211100 of the Philadelphia Code and title of Community Development, by adding new provisions related to workforce housing programs, amending the applicability period, and making other technical changes. And bill number 220261, entitled an ordinance amending section 2101 of the Philadelphia Code and titled residence requirements, by clarifying that temporary residence outside the city, including for military service or educational purposes, does not prevent a person, including a police recruit, from meeting the residence requirement. Respectful reports to that is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 220186 and 220261.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to amend first reading this day of bills number 220186, 220261. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye is aye, and these bills are on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules, as deemed to have had its first reading, and it will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar today.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 220367, 220370, 220371, 220373, 220374, 210933, 220112, 220113, 220224, 220298, and 220291. All other resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Our next order of business is public comment, but before we proceed with the consideration of our public comment, we're going to take a five-minute break to allow our technology professionals an opportunity to connect our speakers today. We rate that.
Mr. President, we are now live.
Mr. President, we are now live.
Thank you, and we are back. Thank you for your patience. So now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment, which was followed. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at a session of council. The speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two-one-five-six-eight-six-three-four-oh-six by three P M. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, you will take your name, your phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, we will have three minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, do intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are thirty seconds remaining of your time, you will be reminded of this. And once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. And shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserve the right to limited number of speakers with repetitious comments being made on the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for public comment at a meeting. Also, please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded. So because it's public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I want to thank you very much for your willingness to participate in today's public comment session. Thank you again. Mr. Decker, please call the first name of the witness, the speaker today on our public comment session.
Yes, Mr. President. The first speaker we have today is Queen Judith Robinson, commenting on two-one-zero-six-eight-five-eight and two-one-zero-eight-hundred.
Thank you. Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good morning. Queen Judith Robinson here, taking this opportunity to request that city council be brought back in session in person ASAP. According to an article, Philadelphia is one of the only big, top-ten cities that's still going virtual. And it's bad enough that the citizens are disconnected from this process. But I am respectfully requesting that you move forward as a body to let us breathe the breath of life and come back on the scene. Because I see that you all are practicing politics, you know? You're all over the place doing this, that, and the third, which, you know, I can appreciate that because I'm there right along with you. But then I see that we're not having in-person city council. So let's do the people's business. Let's get back on track. Let's ease back in to doing the best we can be in this, as we ease out of this pandemic. I think you all would set the best example by showing, you know, that we can move forward to the future. As it relates to this budget, you know, we, as the citizens, don't get an opportunity to speak until May twenty-fourth. And it's really tough for someone like myself, citizen, Queen Judith Robinson, who keeps abreast of what's going on. But in order to have real input and to actually attend hearings would be so important to have input. So much going on. Obviously, none of us are smarter than all of us. Because look at our city. A mess in so many ways. We should know where the money is being directed to be most efficient and effective. We should have input and monitor where these funds are going. Like there's soda tax. We can't get Cecil B. Moore rec center repaired after five years. You know, we want to have input and talk to you all about that. Then I'm also seeing, like, you're talking to some people but not to others. This is not about your friends and family. We're not here as citizens to make you happy. You represent us. We must allow you to know what our input is so you can do our business. So I know these sessions can get a little testy, and I appreciate good questions. You know I do. So continue that. But just know that we should move forward in this very important process. I know it's easy to get used to this virtual process like we all on television or something. But the real deal is getting up close and personal and talking to each other respectfully, and listening to each other respectfully, and doing the people's business. That's what the most important part of this process that you all represent is to me. I'm a committee person, so I'm at that very lowest level of contacting citizens and talking to the people, and then relaying it up the chain of reaction, I'm going to call it, because it's not the chain of command to me, because you all represent me, and you should hear me out. So I do appreciate your attention. I'll be back at a hearing today later, talking about short dumping and trash. I got a lot of input because that's what we do up in North Philly. Been cleaning for all these years, and it's getting worse. So listen out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Catherine Freeland, commenting on two-two-zero-three-seven-three.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Freeland, and I'm the Public Health Program Director at the Hepatitis B Foundation. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you about viral hepatitis and its impact on the city of Philadelphia. There are approximately twenty-five thousand individuals living with hepatitis B in this city and about fifty thousand living with hepatitis C. And since twenty-two thousand and eight, the Hepatitis B Foundation and its coalition, Hep B United Philadelphia, have been working in underserved communities to bring access to healthcare services and awareness of hepatitis B and its link between liver cancer. Prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we received a heart-wrenching call from a teacher who was looking for information for a student. He was a young nineteen-year-old soccer player whose family originated from West Africa and was only given a couple of months to live. He had liver cancer caused by hepatitis B but did not know about his ongoing hepatitis B infection, was not receiving care or management, and as a result, passed away far too soon. Unfortunately, this is a common story in our communities and one that is completely preventable. Like this young man, most do not know about their hepatitis B infection, and it's almost always a silent disease. Hepatitis B impacts African immigrant, Asian American, Pacific Islander communities, and is one of the leading health disparities for these populations. We're also seeing hepatitis B on the rise among persons who inject drugs. And in two thousand and nineteen, the Philadelphia Department of Public Health released a health advisory noting a hundred and seventy-five percent increase between two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen within the population alone. The challenge with hepatitis B is lack of awareness, lack of testing, lack of vaccination and prevention efforts, and limited access to healthcare services due to a variety of challenges like language and cost, for example. We hope that the recognition of this month as Hepatitis Awareness Month can work towards bringing attention and awareness of the link between hepatitis and liver cancer. Right now, liver cancer is on the rise in the United States, and it is expected to continue to rise unless more efforts to work towards prevention, early detection, and screening for hepatitis B and C are done. We, as a coalition, continue to live out our mission and reach underserved communities through screening, vaccination, and education. And we hope to continue to partner with city council as we work towards reaching elimination goals of viral hepatitis in the city. Thank you so much for working towards this resolution and for your time, and we hope for your support for Hepatitis Awareness Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
There are no other speakers today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number two-two-zero-three-sixty-seven.
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance and the Philadelphia Department of Human Services for their collaborative commitment to bring healing and justice to victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April two thousand twenty-two to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Winona Sanchez for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number two-two-zero-three-seven-oh.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying a fee simple time of eighteen thirty-four, eighteen thirty-seven, eighteen forty, eighteen forty-six, eighteen forty-eight, South Allison Street, in the third councilmanic district of the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier. Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Gaultier, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, resolution is adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Housewoman Parker. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number two-two-zero-three-seventy-one.
A resolution initiating action to continue the Port Richmond Industrial Development Enterprise Neighborhood Improvement District beyond its termination date in the area generally bounded generally by the north side of Allegheny Avenue, the west side of Memphis Street, between Allegheny Avenue and East West Morland Street, the south side of East West Morland Street, the property line of thirty-three-hundred Aggett Street, and the backup properties facing along the east side of Tulip Street between West Morland and Ontario Street, and for which the Port Richmond Industrial Development Enterprise Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, serves as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association, approving a preliminary plan for and report concerning the district and authorizing the Committee on Rules and the Club of Council to take all actions that are required by the Community and Economic Improvement Act prior to enactment of an ordinance that would formally continue the district.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion. Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Squilla, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's too slow, Councilman Squilla. Has been moved in second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number two-two-zero-three-seventy-three.
A resolution declaring May two thousand twenty-two to be Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of Hep B United Philadelphia and Hepatitis C Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising awareness of the link between viral hepatitis and liver cancer and the importance of elimination activities.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, two-two-zero-three-seventy-four.
A resolution recognizing Black Enterprise for hosting its eleventh annual Black Entrepreneurs Summit, a nation's largest annual gathering of Black business owners, entrepreneurs, and wealth creators in Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you very much. I move for the option of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, the title of two-one-zero-nine-three-three.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Snyder Avenue, Weciko Avenue, Wolf Street, and Swanson Street.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Winona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The eyes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number two-two-zero-one-one-two.
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Manayunk Special Services District of Philadelphia to extend the term of that authority.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green. Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Winona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The eyes are fifteen and ayes are zero. Majority of-
Council President, I would like to be recorded because I hit a little technical glitch just now.
No problem, Councilman.
Thank you.
Reflected, the eyes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-two-zero-one-one-three.
An ordinance approving a new plan, estimated costs, and proposed method of assessment of the Manayunk Special Services District for and concerning business improvements and administrative services to the Manayunk Business District of the city of Philadelphia.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green. Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Winona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The eyes are sixteen and ayes are zeros. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, two-two-zero-two-twenty-four.
An ordinance to approve amendments to the Jackson University Master Plan in the area bounded by Thirty-Fourth Street, Cherry Street, Thirty-Third Street, and Peloton Avenue related to the Kelly Hall Building at two-oh-three North Thirty-Fourth Street.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Winona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The eyes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number two-two-zero-two-ninety-eight.
An ordinance to approve amendments to the Jefferson Torresdale Hospital Master Plan related to a new proton therapy center building at ten-thousand-eight-hundred Knights Road.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green. Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-two-zero-two-ninety-one.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Uh thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to go on record prior to our vote uh for bill number two-two-zero-two-nine-one uh to thank the administration and specifically Mayor Kenny um for the letter response that he sent back on uh Monday uh on April twenty-fifth uh relative to the concerns that I raised uh in the Appropriations Committee hearing, and also the responses that we received from the Budget Office. I have brought up a few concerns in the Appropriations Committee hearing that have since been addressed um by the administration. The process is starting this month, and so I wanted to go on the record prior to the vote to say that I will be voting in favor of two-two-zero-two-nine-one uh provided the responses I received from Mayor Kenny and also from the Budget Office. Uh thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh this bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
You said aye.
Councilman Don.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth and Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings concerning the concerning the imminent threat to the longstanding constitutional right to an abortion, to examine the profound and devastating local impact, and that the potential repeal of Roe v. Wade would have on individual lives and society as a whole, and to explore what Philadelphia could do to ensure and increase access to abortion in the face of this threat introduced today by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Special Committee on Child Separation in Philadelphia to hold public hearings regarding its final report of findings and recommendations introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Appreciate that swift agenda. Uh our next order of business is speeches, and prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will know for the record at this time that we will use the chat feature available on Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, speeches on behalf of the minority, Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have uh two matters to comment on. Um first, I'd like to wish everyone a happy May fifth, Cinco de Mayo, and just clarify, it's not Mexican Independence Day. It's actually the day that the Mexicans defeated the French Empire at the the Battle of Puebla, and we happen to have a very large population of folks from Puebla living here in our city, and uh I always enjoy their festivities when you see them uh with the French costumes and the horses, and that's all a reenactment of the uh the Battle of Puebla. So, you know, I certainly uh wanna join in celebrating uh victory over um being conquered by uh the French Empire. Uh on a more serious note, um I wanna just note uh that on Tuesday, uh Norman Manetta uh passed away. For those who don't know, uh Norman Manetta, um uh he uh he was a cabinet member under two uh presidencies, uh Republican and Democrat. He's a lifelong Democrat, a proud Democrat. He um spent his early childhood in a in incarceration camp, also called an internment camp because he was a Japanese-American child, and during World War Two, many Japanese-Americans were uh placed in uh incarceration camps. Um after graduating from college, he served in the U.S. Army. He served uh during the Korean War as an intelligence officer. He later was elected to city council in San Jose, became vice mayor, and then mayor in San Jose, and in nineteen seventy-five, he ran for Congress, served twenty years to nineteen ninety-five, um where he retired as chair of the very uh powerful um Public Transportation or Transportation and Public Works Committee. And then in two thousand, President Bill Clinton uh um uh nominated him, and uh he he uh passed the Senate confirmation process to become the first Asian American to serve as a secretary level. And following that, uh President George W. Bush appointed him as Secretary of Transportation. In nineteen ninety-four, he founded the Congressional Asian Pacific American Caucus and an institute, and it was that institute that I had the pleasure of working with, its first executive director, Francis Lim Youngberg, and um Congressman Norm Minetta. What a wonderful gentleman, um uh just a wonderful person to work with, a proud Democrat, but always uh you know, very broad-minded in his public service, putting the public interest first, a real um great example for um for America, but also specifically for Asian Americans, as he was a a someone who broke many um barriers. Um. He uh he will be greatly missed. Uh he died at ninety, and um I did introduce um a a resolution today, but I just wanted to note that um you know, we will miss him, and certainly he's impacted us here in Philadelphia, and condolences to his family and and all loved ones. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank um Councilmember O for that history both on Cinco de Mayo and regarding the late Senator, uh I'm sorry, late Secretary, um Norm Minetta, and his leadership and legacy. Um this week, um Council President, a number of members of council had opportunity to uh see a survey from the diverse chambers, um talking about the real issues um that their members are having um as small businesses in the city of Philadelphia. Um they talked about issues of of crime and taxes, and we know we have a twenty-five percent poverty rate um in our city, and this survey really kind of illustrated um what we all know, that we have a very challenging um tax structure in the city of Philadelphia. And we also know the pandemic has been really challenging uh for small businesses, especially black and brown businesses. Uh nearly twice as many black and brown businesses closed um during the pandemic at a rate of about forty-one percent. Uh and so we know in this city, we have a very difficult tax structure, and Council President, through your leadership, uh you put together a tax reform working group uh that myself and Councilmembers Maria Kiana Sanchez, Councilmember Don, yourself, uh the administration, uh citizens from around um the city were part of uh that tax reform working group. And so started meeting in August of two thousand twenty-one, really looking at uh the challenges we have in tax policy in the city. And it was my understanding um from the administration that they will be looking at the proposals coming out of the Tax Reform Working Group uh as proposals for the city of Philadelphia. Uh and we continued to meet with the administration um now and throughout last year, early part of this year, and even in the mayor's budget speech, I thought we were on the same page of trying to come up with a proposal. Uh we knew that we couldn't really put together a proposal until we had the city's um real estate assessments. So I was uh somewhat shocked um this week. I think other members of council as well as um Tax Reform Working Group and citizens uh around the city that when we received the assessment information, uh the mayor also provided a proposal regarding taxes. Um this was something that was a a different perspective. I thought we were all on the same team until uh that proposal um came out. Um and in many ways, I can, I feel like um members of the Sixers when uh Ben Simmons just decided he was gonna leave the team and do his own thing. Uh we as a body know that we don't have that option. We can't just walk off the court and leave the team. And so as we go through the budget process and deal with the hard issues of how we allocate all the resources that come into the city of Philadelphia, including the one point four billion dollars from the American Rescue Plan, we're gonna have to balance all of these issues, issues of how we deal with public safety, uh which is the number one concern in our city, how we provide the resources that we need for um the qualified services for the citizens uh in the city of Philadelphia, as well as um tax policy. So I look forward to a robust debate um in this body as we grapple with all these issues and try to balance between uh how we look at our tax policy in the city of Philadelphia and address the issues um that so many of our constituents uh need for us to address as part of the budget process. I I hope that the mayor will collaborate with us as we go through this process and rejoin the team. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President. Uh Mr. President, I wanted to just note for the record that um on today, uh Councilmembers Johnson, uh Jamie Gaultier, Cindy Bass, Helen Gim, and I uh had the great honor and privilege to be joined by City Controller Rebecca Reinhardt, Congressman Brendan Boyle, and our uh PA House Representative and Chair of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus, Donna Bullock, in attending a pre-Mothers' Day breakfast that was held at the School District of Philadelphia by the organization that we wish were not in existence, Mothers in Charge, led and founded by um Dorothy Johnson Spite, and this pre-Mothers' Day breakfast, uh Mr. President, um their theme is "A Mother's Plea for Peace. Sons, Please Put Down Your Guns." Um after the breakfast, they are going to start a march, Mr. President, from the school district at forty-four, four forty North Broad Street, and it's going to proceed down Broad Street to City Hall, and they're going to have a rally uh being led by the mothers um here at City Hall. So uh I know all of the women um of council, uh if schedules permit, um were were asked to come, and all members of council, if you can come, please uh uh be there at the rally. We're gonna present our formal uh citation from uh the City Council of Philadelphia, and to thank those mothers for channeling uh their pain um and suffering and grief um into action. Thank you so very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Well, thank you, Council President. I just wanna take a moment and ask if we could have a moment of silence for um former State Representative Harold James. Um he represented the one hundred eighty-six legislative district covering the areas of South Philadelphia and Southwest Philadelphia, and he passed um this week.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. I had the great opportunity to work with with former State Representative Harold James. He served as the president of the Guardian Civic League. He served as a chairperson of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus. He was a former Philadelphia police officer. Um he was also on the forefront of criminal justice reform before it became a wave. He was always advocating to make sure that um individuals who were defendants in in cases uh received their rights properly. Uh he was on the forefront of making sure that interrogations by police were uh were videotaped. Uh on countless times, I've watched some challenge. Uh our former district attorney, uh Leonard Abrams, regarding the role that the District Attorney's Office played in partnership with the Philadelphia Police Department in addressing a variety of different issues that significantly have an impact on the African-American community. So just wanna take a moment just to acknowledge um his leadership and the work that he have done here in the city of Philadelphia. Uh for all those on the listening audience who are listening, um his wake will take place on Wednesday, May the eleventh, at Tasker Street Missionary Baptist Church in South Philadelphia, twenty-ten Tasker Street, um from two to seven P.M., and his funeral will take place on Thursday, May the twelfth, at Yasha Ministries, beginning at ten A.M., located at Twenty-third and Snyder Avenue. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Um let's let's do a moment of silence, Unison. A moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. God bless. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of um the governor, the mayor, the managing director, uh Member O'Neal, and Member Squilla at the Police and Firemen's Memorial yesterday. Um as we sat out there representing city council, and we looked out at the audience of families who had lost their loved ones in the service of the city of Philadelphia, it truly put in perspective uh what the definition of public service really truly means. In one case, one of the officers that passed away, um Officer Tabali was from the Fifth District, which is in uh the Fourth Councilmatic District. I remember him um as always being a guardian of people, a guardian of public safety. Um the last time we were together, it was with um some of the members of city council on a bike ride. He literally rode the bike. He stopped in intersections. Catherine Gilmore was with us. Um Member Thomas was there, uh Member Squilla was there, and I just remembered how humble a servant he was. He is truly missed, along with the other firemen and police that lost their lives. And many of them uh lost their lives due to COVID over the last two years, and we wanna thank them for their service, thank their families for their sacrifice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um true soldiers for the city of Philadelphia. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanna echo uh Councilman Jones. I couldn't make that event, but that's the ultimate sacrifice. So thank you for bringing that up. And also wanna be in support of Councilman Green on this tax reform commission, and we should have another meeting on that. But also in that diversity chambers that we heard this week, I think it was Councilman Green, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Thomas, myself, and other staffers of all of our offices, heard from these uh chambers, diverse chambers, about how tough it is for these businesses to survive in our city with what they have to deal with, especially the last three years. So we do have to try to help them. And also wanna mention to you, Councilman Jones, last night, I was with uh the developer, Michael Davis, who was developing the Bud Company uh in your district, I guess, and he was mentioning to me that I think they'd have like three million square feet for life sciences, but how difficult it is to hire people from outside the city because of the wage taxes. They're having some trouble with that. So I'm just sharing some of these issues because in the long run, we are on the verge of an explosion in our city of life science.
of an explosion in our city of life science, and it's cell and gene therapy, where we're known throughout the world as being at the very top. And many of our companies that have been started here through Penn and other places have stayed here, but many have also gone to Boston and other cities. And I say this because we have to make sure that we keep these companies here. We need to, they're important jobs for the city, but also important for us to, in our schools, as we mentioned yesterday, to make sure that our schools are training our students for this future, because this is a game changer for the city. It's not just about people from outside getting jobs here. It's about the students and residents of our city getting these jobs. But I can tell you, there's, we have someone in our city who's like the godfather of cell and gene therapy, who's formed companies in excess of fifteen billion dollars of market capitalization right here in Philadelphia. Half of them have left. We have to figure out ways to keep them here. That's very important for the space. So I'm just going to, I'll be back to all of you with some ideas, but I wanted to mention that this is something that I think is extremely important for the economy of our city and to grow our economy, and we need to support all those life science companies as we do with other businesses. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Council. Thank you very much. I'll seize the opportunity when it's presented to us because it may not be there for long. Um, Decker, I believe that concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. Uh, so with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-two at ten A.M.
Second.
Thank you.